Are you looking for quality, handcrafted, one-of-a-kind, unique items? Look no farther than Off the Square Artisans. We have over forty artists ranging from woodworking to blacksmithing, photography, rug weaving, handmade soaps, and everything in between. If you're looking for home decor or a gift for that hard-to-shop-for friend or family member, come on into Off the Square Artisans located at 205 East High Street, one block east of the south side of the Rockville Square. Wednesday to Saturday, ten a.m. to five p.m., and Sundays, one to five p.m.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thanks all for coming. Mr. Minutes for the crew of the executive session and of the regular meeting?
Yes, I make the motion we approve the minutes for the executive session, six-five, and also the regular meeting, nine-six-five.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. All right, payroll. And we get payroll in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety, ten-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
I make the motion we approve payroll in the amount of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
And then there was your little second payroll.
Oh, okay.
I missed it.
Oh, me too.
Okay, for thirty-two-eighty-sixty-four.
Yep.
Okay, I make the motion we approve payroll in the amount of three-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty dollars and sixty-four cents on top of the other.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
We're now paying Union Hospital Security people.
Yep, good. Hope that all got worked out. Get it worked out, okay?
It was hard.
Good. Ain't nothing easy, you know. But they, they is mighty, isn't it? And we acknowledge received a payroll claims account payment report in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and ninety-one cents.
And I make the motion we acknowledge we received a payroll claims in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-thousand-five-fifty-three-seventy-one.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. We have a request for an out-of-cycle check, the Indiana Forest Association, for twenty dollars. I make a motion, will you approve our cycle check?
It's a state call meeting, they have to.
Okay. I make a motion, will you approve that out-of-cycle check?
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Just to, just to clarify, up above it's twenty dollars on the form, which is what Jim made the motion for, but down below it says five hundred dollars?
Yeah.
So should it be twenty or should it be five hundred?
Which one?
On the claim form itself.
He made the motion because it says twenty dollars up here and then down here on the...
That's PM.
Oh, okay, that's for, for comp time pay?
No, it's, um...
I don't know what twenty dollars for a state call meeting would be.
It's five hundred dollars.
Five hundred would be, but more like the registration fee for a board of accounts meeting.
Yeah, so we need to redo that one.
What should do is this.
We just really need to redo the motion.
We need a motion, yes. I, I amend my motion, make it five hundred dollars rather than twenty dollars.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
The next one is covered bridge certification request, and this has to be filled out yearly and just with your signatures, and I did it the same as last year because I figured we still had the same number of covered bridges, twenty-eight.
Yep. Is that right, twenty-eight bridges we use in the system? Yeah.
At eighteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars, please. So I make a motion, we approve the twenty-eight covered bridges for the certification.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Get the system in here, we'll pull this out. In case you're wondering, the reason we certify that number to make sure we haven't lost any, we, the state gives us eighteen, eighteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars per bridge every year for maintenance on covered bridges, goes into our covered bridge fund, which we're going to be using a significant part of very soon for the Melcher Bridge project. And that's why we have certified that that is a true number, the twenty-eight, we already do have twenty-eight bridges still in the system, now we have bridges outside of the system, but they're not included in the eighteen-hundred-and-fifty dollars from the state.
Even though there's a couple you said we take back, but they haven't done it.
If we do, yeah.
Yeah, we get the, another thirty-six-hundred dollars for those two down there. They need repair, too.
Yes, they do.
The next two items is just an FYI, I got the information from the travelers insurance.
Okay. Okay. Nick, we, we have the contract with the elevator service, and it's been two-hundred-and-something. Anyway, it's gone up to three-fifty, the new number is three-fifty, do we need to approve that? Okay, I make the motion that we approve the price increase to three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar-and-ninety-two cents?
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
And Don said last year we paid for a year of the time, and this year we're going to pay for a year of time, it saves us two-hundred-and-ten dollars.
Yep, yep, and that's fine, we decided that a long time ago, maybe we knew we were unpaid anyway, so. Chris, I'm looking for your approval for a contract dividing radios for the dispatch of these radios, ours is a contingency radio system to allow the dispatch to work off of the seven-eight-hundred system if we have site trunking, and also to talk to the schools over their network, and then we talk to DHF, back to the state. This is a part of a grant, so it was twenty thousand dollars. I recommend that we go with the commercial radio service, all three of the companies put good bids together, it's just Raycom and Advanced Radios, a little bit more.
Okay.
That's just, those, those brand names of radios are a little bit more expensive, but commercial radio service will give us what we need for the price, for the money that we have.
Okay.
So his recommendation is that we go with the eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, is it fifty-six or fifty-eight?
Should be fifty-six.
Fifty-six, okay, so scratch the eight off the bottom there. I make the motion, we approve the, that contract, that grant fee.
And I'll second that.
Now, have, have you got the grant?
Yeah, we have the grant.
Okay, so money's in place, okay.
So we just need to call the company and start installing it.
Okay, so I'll structure my motion as, I'll go ahead and approve the, the recommendation of the director to go with commercial radio service for the radio system at eighteen-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and fifty-six.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Stephanie, how are you?
Yes, I'm good, thanks.
What you got today?
I would like to request an additional appropriation from Fund twelve-thirty-seven into service contracts, the category of service contracts. The schools and the sheriff's office have some ideas when school starts, some prevention activities, and we would like to go ahead and request that fifteen thousand be moved to that category so that the funds are available as the projects are planned and as we need to make payment.
Are those the opioid funds?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's going to be two steps for it, I understand, we would approve doing that, but then the council will have to approve the reappropriation of the money.
And I'll put it on the council's next meeting.
Okay, so the request is that we approve the fifteen thousand dollar transfer of the opioid fund to the requested line.
Okay, and do I need to come to the council meeting?
I don't know that you have to, but it wouldn't hurt if you could.
Okay.
They'll have questions about this for, probably. Most, most of these things aren't two-step like this, but since it's a fund that we're responsible for, we have to approve the transfer first, the council couldn't do it without us because it's our obligation to spend those dollars, we're giving the council permission to do it, and that's no guarantee that they're going to do, but they will, but that's, that's the way it has to work, it's a cumbersome system, but that's what it's got to be.
Okay.
So is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make that, go ahead, Dana.
No, I thought you just made the motion.
No.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Now, I'll make a motion, we accept the recommendation of the coordinating council to appropriate fifteen thousand dollars for school activities and ask the council for an additional appropriation.
And I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
So then, do I need to fill out a request to be going?
I'll put it on there, because in this request here, it's got council on there.
Okay, and that meeting is?
The second?
Okay.
No, the second?
Thursday.
Thursday of the month, and I don't know.
It's like ten in the morning or something like that.
I can name it.
Nine in the morning.
Yeah, nine, and the date, second Thursday in July will be the thirteenth.
Okay, so seven, July thirteenth at nine o'clock?
Yes, here.
Here.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
I reconsidered, it's make whatever plans you need to make, it's just formality, we've got to go through. Because the state will ask for all that, they'll ask for our minutes to make sure that it was approved by us before we ever go to a new place, and that would only get the order in trouble if that was done without that approval, so.
Okay.
Not that I care if you get in trouble, but we're trying to avoid it if we can. Okay, all right, thanks. The plan office has a request.
I'm talking for the plan office.
Oh, okay.
They're wanting, their contract doesn't expire for their, they want a new color copier, and, because they're having to use the assessors all the time.
Right.
And, but they, it doesn't expire until February the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, so they're wanting to know if the copier guy gave us a quote for a sixty-month lease for the copier they want and for the buyout of the one that they have right now, a hundred-and-seventeen dollars and sixty-three cents a month.
That one seventeen include, includes the buyout cost?
Includes the buyout, but the buyout portion of that is thirty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Right, right.
Over the sixty months, we're still paying two thousand dollars.
What do you guys think? And when does the other one expire?
February twenty, two thousand four.
Twenty-four, yeah.
Point four.
So we're still, until August, December, January, December, January, yeah, eight months away, so with the, with two thousand bucks, they get them what they need?
I'm not sure it is.
I talked to Roy, and I haven't got back with him since I found out how much the buyout portion is, and he said if it was around forty dollars, he was going to tell them to wait.
Yeah, that seems right to me, a couple thousand bucks, no reason.
Because they've got by for a few months.
That's only bother the assessors office for another eight months.
Well, they can send it down to our office.
What's wrong with the other copier?
It's black and white, and they have to print grid, flat paint, and get better in color.
I can understand, one, their color, and I think we'll support that completely when it comes time, but I don't think we need to pay an additional two thousand dollars and do it now when we could do it when that expires.
Well, there is at least two others in the courthouse that could get us.
Right.
Okay.
We didn't have another colored printer somewhere, that's one thing.
Yeah.
If there's two other colored printers in the courthouse.
Okay.
And I even think the veterans office is a colored printer, he doesn't know why he got one.
This is the Lucas Devices equipment?
Well, one of them, if you look on the second page, one says Mecca, up at the top it says Mecca, down below it says Lightford. I redid it so they both say Mecca, I just need for you to sign it.
I got you, okay.
So we've already approved it, so we just need to sign the new one, okay?
There you go.
Yep. This says copy, you want to use this one that says copy?
No, I want to use this one.
That's what I saw. And?
That...
Authorize signature or the?
The second one.
The issuing authority?
Yeah.
And it's the nineteenth. Okay. All right. Departmental, Randy.
I'll have a whole lot today. We did get Bloomingdale Road, Strawberry Road, Bloomingdale, chip and seal, and golf course road.
Good.
And old thirty-six out here.
When did you get that done?
Last week.
So that'll take care of the leaching?
Yeah, last week.
That'll take care of the leaching problem then, with the oil coming?
I hope so.
Okay.
Change colors on it, so hopefully that'll help, so.
Okay.
And we got English Road and nine-hundred North both paved.
Okay.
Last Wednesday, Thursday, so we done. And I must have done the chip and seals Monday and Tuesday, and then went up there and done those paving roads. We're going to start on Warrior Road in the morning, and when we get that one done, which should be done by noon, March, Tuesday, so Wednesday, and we'll move the equipment over to four-hundred east.
Okay.
And start paving that one.
Four-hundred east, where are we talking about there?
Between Seven Hills Road or three-fifty north and four-fifty north.
Okay.
Rudder out for the obish courses.
Mm-hmm.
But one thing we do with that is repave it.
Okay.
Hopefully the other, next year, we can chip and seal the rest of it, and hopefully that'll take care of it, it's not near as bad.
Okay.
And that's all I have, really.
I talked with Randy last week after our meeting about talking about the transition, he's looking to retire at the end of next year, and I told him we didn't want to wait till the last minute, that I'd worry about a replacement, and we didn't want to get caught in the middle, I wanted him to participate in the transition, how we do that, how we structure the change, so I'll call a meeting of the road committee here one of these days, whenever you guys are available, and we'll set the start of the plan, and make a wish list of what we'd like to see, or if we'd like to see different, like what we'd like to keep, Randy will have his suggestions of what needs to be done, not needs to be done, he's been there a long time, he would know better than any of us what, what we need to look for, and what things he would do differently if he was able to do things differently, because this would be a, really, like in Randy's case, a generational thing, we want to make sure we get this right the first time, we don't want to be going in trying to make repairs and changes and stuff, so I want everybody's participation on this, and then move on down that line. I have not talked with Remian County, as you know, we met with LTAP about the chaired county engineer, which really, to our council members who were there, and Bruce was there, that really sounds like a, like a good thing to do, something we should do, but we were concerned if Remian County was not involved, and I'm sure that Tim just never told anybody about it, and that's why they didn't show up, and it was embarrassing to me that we'd had this set up and they not even participate, so like I made the council a little concerned about whether we want to participate with county, but I'm sure that's where the difficulty lay, so it's still a reasonable thing to look at, so I will talk with Tim, and we're getting the meeting set up, and go through the stuff we talked about that day, Bruce, if that works with you, and explain where we are and see what we want to do, but we would want to make that part of this transition structure as well, and have some kind of, I've got some information from those counties as to the demarcation between what the highway superintendent's responsibilities are, what the engineer would do, who has what to do what, and we have an opportunity, I think, to either keep it exactly as it is or make whatever changes we need to make, and make it better, so we'll look at that and see what we, by now be the time to do that, so I just want you to know that Randy is aware that we've talked about that, and he and I have talked for a couple years about when that was probably going to happen, so we'll begin that process and start looking to see, LTAP will help with the, with the looking for folks and doing all the posting of the job opportunities and who might or might not be available, they'll, they'll help us through all this stuff, so, appreciate it. Thanks, sir.
I did forget, I met with Joe Clark this morning, and he's going to make some changes on the...
Who is he?
Engineer.
BS Engineering.
Oh, okay, BS Engineering, okay. On the Melcher?
Yeah, on the Melcher Bridge. He's going to make some changes to the contract.
Okay.
Or the bidding process.
Okay.
And he's wanting to...
They changed some design plans on it, then?
No.
No, okay.
He made some plans on it, I mean, better than the previous.
Better, better, the handwritten thing, okay, good, okay.
With the bid form, he needs to do some changing on the...
Okay.
Because we can't have somebody out there daily.
No.
To keep track of their pay items, you know, each time, so need to give them, I kind of lumped some, I think.
What about permitting from the DNR?
Well, that's...
Has he checked on any of that?
Yeah, it should be, he's hoping to be about three months, so, three to four months.
Just amazing it takes that long, you know?
Well, a lot of times it takes longer.
Could be years, I know.
And it may take longer, but he's, he's hoping for three to four months.
Okay. A lot of people out there will be excited to get that going.
We're kind of planning on bidding in August.
Okay, great.
So hopefully that'll work out.
Okay.
And that's all I have, unless you guys have your...
LTAP, are you full?
I think so, maybe one short, but I think I'm pretty much full.
Have we got our excavator back, or you got our equipment back, I mean, our?
Great old.
Great old, yeah.
Yeah, it's been here all the time.
Okay.
Just waiting on the cooler.
Okay.
Which was very expensive, but...
How expensive is very expensive?
About thirty-five-hundred dollars.
Oh, my gosh.
They had to build one.
Okay, so we haven't been able to do any brush gun with a, with a brush head or none, or have we?
That's on the wheel excavator.
You're talking about the great old ditching machine, you're talking about the excavator with the cutting head.
I thought that was all that was broken, was the excavator?
Uh-uh, no.
Oh, I thought it was broken, okay.
The, the brush cutter hadn't been running because he was running the roller.
Oh, okay.
And I got the other boy on the paver, and he's on the chipper.
Okay.
Put it to you, so.
Are you getting comfortable with someone on the paver?
Nobody went on.
Okay.
I've been running.
I knew you had been, yeah, yeah.
But that's what you want to do.
Yes, we do, once you do, yeah.
So that's what I'm doing.
Yes, we do, so we're going to need somebody to be able to do that by the time you work, working your way out of us, so I don't know how we do that, so whatever needs to be done.
The guy on last year wasn't too bad, I mean, he was doing pretty good, and the other guy on the chipper was doing pretty good.
Okay.
I didn't want you requesting, I was blaming myself, so.
Well, that discussion we had, and make sure you understand that we weren't, you were of the opinion that we didn't want you on those pieces of equipment, and that wasn't what we were saying at all, we just didn't want to be doing the paving ourselves, period. Whether you do the paver work or you have someone else do the paver work, that's up to you, you're the superintendent on that, so we're not saying that you can't put anybody, at least that's my opinion, we're not saying you can't put anybody else on there, we have to have somebody trained, but we just corrected your opinion, which was that you thought we'd said we don't, didn't want you doing it, and that wasn't the case at all, and the fact our preference was if anybody was going to be doing it, we were conservative as you doing it, if we were going to be doing paving, it was a question with if we were going to be doing paving or not of ourselves, since we are, but you feel free if you think you have someone that you need to train or can train, or you think somebody's capable of doing it.
I don't mind doing it, but you just going to have to be patient with me, if I can't get around the county to see you on complaints and stuff.
I understand, I understand, but don't feel that we have mandated that you operate that, because that's, that's not the case, the case was that you believed that we had forbidden you to operate that, and that wasn't the case at all, they always left that up to you to do that, so you make the wisest decision you can with that, you're the guy.
Okay. Well...
We didn't correct you to mandate that you do it, it's just that we, we weren't mandating that you don't do it, that's why we were correcting, but we weren't saying that you couldn't do that, so.
And if it frees you up more to, if you feel comfortable with them guys on it, I don't have a problem if you put them on?
Yeah, all we were doing was correcting that misconception that you had, because you thought we had told you to get off of it, no, we were just talking about not paving, period, I would just say we didn't pave anything ever, that we hired all that, I understand we can't afford all that, but that way we have, if there's an issue, then we have someone responsible for that, and this is stuff that those guys do every day, you've got different crew all the time, it's got, you've been there for a hundred years, but you've got a lot of new guys doing stuff.
Yeah.
And stuff.
Pretty much all of them's pretty new.
Yes, they are. Well, once we get into this, some transition ideas, we've had a meeting a few with the highway, and you and us and the other road committee people, then we'll have a meeting with your guys out there, too, of what we're looking at, what we're going through the process, and how it all, we hope it all works, and we don't want to, we want to be as transparent as possible on everybody, on everything, we're not sneaking up on anybody, not pulling behind anybody's back, we just know this, end is coming at some point, we've got to be prepared for it, I don't want to get caught and have to grab somebody right now and throw somebody in that job and try to figure out how we go, so I want to have it all in place until that day comes, we have an easy transition from this to that, and life goes on the best we can. Okay?
Great.
Appreciate it.
Great.
Thanks.
Our kids is back.
Yes, I knew they were, yeah, yeah, I guess they had a big time.
Yeah, I guess, I haven't talked to them.
No.
I've had them on the road.
Our granddaughters went to Florida, they just, just came back, so, yeah. Are they old enough to be going to places like that?
No.
How did that happen?
Sure not.
Jeez.
They drove up two weeks.
No kidding. All right, thanks, Randy.
Have a good evening.
You too. Mr. Fraser?
I don't have anything.
Wow.
Is there any questions for me?
No, nothing you need from us, I guess, for a night out thing?
Nope, we're good there, I think.
We're going to have gammas going on.
We have two nights, Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay.
Which Wednesday's kind of our national night out, and the fair board's doing Thursday.
Okay, okay, sounds great to me, I'm glad it's peaceful. How full is the jiggle?
Probably over around seventies.
Okay.
So we got a little bit of room.
I have a meeting with Matt Speckley tomorrow, and we're going to, we're going to hopefully have some news about when, when and who's going to be looking at doing the exciting, exciting stuff, so.
Yeah, we look forward to that.
Okay.
While you're here, I was going to let you know, I had a meeting Thursday evening with Kent Hutchins, Joe Hawkins, Celia Case, Lord Dickey, and I, Kansas representing the Baptist Church, Bridge Department, Joe, parking lots, Celia, the uptown part of the rental, and Lord Dickey, the south end of town, just trying to put our heads together to see what we come up with, to try to solve some of the problem with traffic driving through all the people, we're planning on meeting again a week from this Thursday, if you want to attend, you can, at that point, we've got, I think we've got the biggest part of it hashed out and simplified, it would probably work if it works with your schedule, or if you could send someone seven o'clock in the evening, and then after that meeting, we think we'll be ready to present everything to you and...
Where's the meeting?
The other two commissioners over at Bridge, it's close for all of us, yes.
Okay.
That's what we got planned.
That was good to know.
Can you give me anything for us? You're just specating.
Just to say thank you again for our software, and again, and again, and again.
Yeah, yeah.
I think all three of our offices are pleased as punch.
Mary Ann was, started off for a conversation while ago, that's that, Katie said that we're gonna do this kinda stuff, I'm thinking, oh man, it's not, is there something wrong with it in there? No, she went on with, it's great, so we're thrilled that it's great.
The people we work with are amazing.
Good, that's what, that's what Mary Ann was saying, yep, good. Mark this down, we did something correct, we did something right, so, so, mark that down today. Juneteenth, remember that. Um, speaking of Juneteenth, I had a question today from someone, we had a good discussion about it. Juneteenth really is the only federal holiday that we don't participate in, we don't participate in Indigenous Americans Day, but it's the same day as Columbus Day, so we do recognize that, but we don't recognize Juneteenth, that's a federal holiday. There are eleven federal holidays, and we recognize all the federal holidays except that one. I'm not suggesting that we do, I just wanted to bring it up for consideration, if we should, if we should follow with every federal holiday. I explained to her, I said, it's not really a recognized holiday in that everybody works, she was talking about how all the other government workers don't work, and the post offices off, and banks are closed, and that kinda stuff, which is true. My question was that I just have a difficulty giving a taxpayer-paid employee a day off, and the taxpayers themselves don't get the day off for the holiday, which typically they would if it was Veterans Day, or if it's, I know I already had any Veterans Day off, a lot to do, but Christmas, New, New Year's, those kinda things, everybody gets those days off, so, just something to think about, I told her I'd bring it up, we can talk about it and see if that's something we wanna do or not.
Sure, is the state open today or closed?
State's closed, I think.
We thought we followed the state policy.
Yes, we always have, yeah.
And I don't think Juneteenth's on the state policy.
I seen two state guys today.
I don't think the state's closed today.
We got inspector on a job today, on a state job, working out.
I don't think they are.
Well, that'd be good then, 'cause that's what we do.
We follow the state policy.
Yes, we have, yeah.
And if the governors not put it on the, as a holiday, just 'cause it's a federal holiday, doesn't mean.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only holiday, I was, I was surprised there weren't more, when I was doing research on it, I'm surprised there weren't more federal holidays and everything, really, just those eleven. And then Indiana. State holiday.
I can get a notice from any of them.
No, it is not.
Usually you have to have a notice out, an email out, send from.
Like I said, what are inspectors there today as we talk?
Yeah, yeah, so that's good.
We just follow the state.
Yeah, Juneteenth is not a, not an official holiday in Indiana, so it's good to know. Okay. I have nothing else, you guys have any?
We got Fort Tabor.
Oh, I forgot about it, we've been looking at it the whole time too.
I don't, I brought you all the shirt on, so.
Yeah, it's true.
And nobody contacted, nobody contacted me to put you on.
I didn't.
Okay, you can just show up anytime, we don't listen to you anyway.
I don't think you guys would turn me away, would you?
No.
Number one hundred and three, so.
Wow.
Water Mile Stone, uh, one of the best counties in the state.
And I have not been at every one of them.
Six hundred and thirty-three four-Hers enrolled this year, so that's up from last year.
That's great.
So that's a good thing, for the first time ever, we had a, um, showmanship prep program today where kids could come in and learn all the fitting techniques of all the livestock, so they could swap around, uh, learn it all different, and it's the first time we've done that. Christie did all that work behind that with the ambassadors, it's a new program, so each barn has an ambassador group that helps further the four-H mission, where we help teach other kids, you know, the different aspects of their livestock, so.
And that's a great number, I know when Alan Hader was there, he may have entered all of them, I'm not sure. The number's around six hundred all the time, always was, and it's just amazing that we've been able to, over all these years, to maintain that kind of a number of kids in that four-H program.
And I can tell you, you know, we draw a lot of eyes from university level, 'cause they see what numbers we do and what kinda program they impact. You know, the number of volunteers that we have from adults, you know, is top-notch, you know, across the state compared to them, so.
I know there are several people, and I've had conversations with some, some I have coffee with in the mornings, and they're not talking big things, but reasonable things. Are there things, or do you have a list of things or a wish list that you would, and the Fair Board would like to have, but just don't have much to do, that if someone wanted, they don't need?
We can work on that, because we have, you know, of course, the extension board plus the Fair Board, both that handle everything out there, so.
I bet people will say, you know, if I knew what they needed, and, and again, I'm not talking thousands of dollars, they don't have it.
Right.
It's something they can do to help, if you had some kind of list you could produce, I bet you would get results on that, 'cause there are several people out there who are willing to help do stuff, if they just know there's.
So one thing that we're working on, of course, you know, we had, you know, a big rodeo event last year that had attendance that we had turned people away.
And you're having it here.
And that's the first time, you know, we've had an event out there in a long time that we had turned people away because we didn't have enough seating. And that's probably one of our biggest projects that they're looking at towards the future, is what to do with seating capacity out there.
That'd be, that'd be good, and if you had some numbers of what, what it would take to do it, you need to, the sound system I got, um, and provided, gave it to Cliff when they put it up for the young farmers, but that just came from a job I was doing for the schools, it was an old system in the schools, and those amp speakers, those outside door speakers were perfectly fine, but had I not known that that need was there, they just would've got pitched and would've just been gone, so if there was something that we could get our hands on to see, or maybe even, maybe get something in the paper once in a while, maybe of, of needs that you might have, and let somebody see, and, oh, I can do that, or I'd be glad to do that. There's, most people I know, they kinda think it's a wonderful program.
One request I have, and Randy took off already, but where they repaved Beedale Road and Four-H Road, it is a very steep transition, and I'm afraid as we have livestock trailers come in that road, that they might get hung up on the new pavement, because it is a pretty significant drop to Four-H Road from Beedale because of the raise and the way it's cut.
Okay.
Across there.
I would guess.
So it needs, needs a tape, put it in there.
Yeah. And if somebody's going towards the fairgrounds on one of these low-profile livestock trailers, it'll drop, and then that bottom will just drag that pavement right off.
And they could probably do that, just with the patching machine, they could form it up and just fill it with that patch, I bet, so. I'm gonna send it to him too, but you just call him to see what he's got, if you don't get any satisfaction, let me know, but, but I think he will, he'll, he'll take care of that. He saw a trailer all of his likes, he'll, he'll know what that's like, so.
And we're about ready, so wish us luck.
Okay. Well, I think you're doing fine out there, I'm surprised, but I think you're doing fine out there.
Wow.
You're doing, doing okay. Glad you're there, I'm, I really am glad you're there, all the projects you do, whether it be making syrup, or be archery, or with a beat, but ice base, all those things that you do, I, I'm just thrilled to have that kind of educator out there doing those kinda things for kids, you're doing a good job.
We have our master gardener class real quick tonight graduating, we have nine, that's the first class we've had since the pandemic, and they'll be graduating. We partnered with Vermillion County, of course, to do that, and the Montezuma Community Center, Town Montezuma made it available for us to rent that building for free, so it worked really well.
And explain to me, I know there are master gardener group, are they the ones that put the school on, or how's this, how's this work?
Their new extension puts the school on, and then once they graduate from the school, then they can join a local group.
Okay.
That's a five-one-three that helps to further.
Okay.
Uh, horticultural education in the community, so they will work with youth groups or.
And we have that group in Mid-County?
Yeah, they do the, all the, the Lust Garden, the interpretive garden up there, they take care of that, plant it, everything. The stuff out here at the depot, the Milesquail, they're the ones that started all that.
Okay.
And put the signs up for the interpretive part.
But his service side, he used to have a fundraiser out at the Lust Combe just for that purpose, for maintaining Lust Combe and the gardens, and the master gardeners started to do that. Then the master gardeners did, for a while, and they haven't, I don't think, for a while, um, done the, um, little gardens there at, at the service side museum as well, so I know they're actively doing stuff, but that's a project they'd like to look at, that'd be great too, but.
Yeah, get with me.
But just things, things to look at and see, and things that we just don't know about, don't do.
The, the thing that's difficult about plant sales anymore, and the master gardener group in Putnam County still does it, but they're supposed to be inspected by a state inspector to actually have the sales, so.
Really?
And have a nursery license and all that stuff.
I'll be, okay. Anything you need from us, let us know.
I'll probably holler at you here the next couple of days, I've had a couple of guys working on all your shelving units, building up for the shop, they should have them finished by the time I get up there, so.
As long as, before the projects, I think I'm gonna.
Yeah, should, outside of painting, that should be done by the time I get back, comes up, they're, they're.
Appreciate it.
Well underway.
Great. Anybody have anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
We'll slide it down.
We're adjourned.